This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Happy New Year to everyone. Very excited to be coming to all of you from the Twelve Corners Middle School. This is the fourth of our sort of roadshow board meetings. Having had the chance to be at the other schools, very excited to be at the middle school tonight. We happen to be in the middle school library, so a lot of fun. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak? We have the opportunity, as we do in every public meeting, for public participation. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have received the agenda. Thank you, Kim, for sending that out. Any questions with regards to the agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by owner?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which seems like it was a long time ago. It was last year, but that was December twelfth. You've all had a chance to review the minutes from that meeting. Any questions, edits, or changes? Seeing none, motion to approve the minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? As we are at the middle school tonight, it does make sense to get a TCMS facilities improvement plan update from Lou and the team.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to recap some of the highlights of the proposed capital project. The Board of Education approved a twenty-one point eight million dollar project at its last meeting. Tonight, we're going to go over some of the project details, introduce some of the fact sheets that have been presented by, prepared by Dan Goldman and our partners at Campus Construction, and then we're going to dig more into the financial implications of the project. We have tonight Jason Schwartz, who is president of Bernard P. Donigan. And just like any big corporation who has a complex tax return, we use our financial consultants to do all the analysis with us from a building aid perspective and from a debt perspective to ensure that what we say to the community is, in fact, accurate. So I will also ask Ms. Edmonds to talk specifically to the scope of work that's going to impact the Twelve Corners Middle School, highlight the capital project objectives from her perspective. So as we talked about, this is the referendum details. Twenty-one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand is being proposed on February seventh to the community. This would be a full reinvestment of the proceeds from the sale of the Brookside School. So we're using that to offset the local share and leveraging that with our building aid, as Mr. Schwartz will explain to you in greater detail. And again, that is our commitment to the community, that this is a full reinvestment of the portion of the capital product, or capital levy that is already dedicated to debt and to capital improvements. So again, as our debt comes off, we're reinvesting that, and that's why we can say with confidence that this has no additional impact to the local tax levy. The important dates, obviously, February seventh is the vote date. Polls will be open from seven AM to seven PM at the Central Office Administration Building, and we have a public hearing on January thirty-first at seven PM. At that public hearing and Community Information Center, we're going to have our architects, we're going to have our engineers, we'll have our instructional leaders talking about the capital project objectives and the opportunities that this project presents. So with that, these are the facility improvement goals. We have a fact sheet that has been developed. I encourage everyone to go to the website to understand the scope, to review it, ask any questions. We will be preparing a frequently asked question, so we're very interested in community feedback and community interest in this project. And you can see the website, it was on the site, but it being covered. So WBCSD.org, and then there's the facilities capital improvement project site. So with that, I'd like to first introduce Mrs. Edmonds to talk about the scope at Twelve Corners Middle School and what she's hoping to achieve through this project as the building principal.
Good evening. I am super excited. You can see the highlighted area on the screen up there focuses mainly on the lobby. And what we're looking at doing in this future project is repurposing the space that is currently our main office and our counseling office combined into one space that is our mental health suite. With the growing and evolving, changing needs of our students, we really need a larger space to fully support them and their needs, and increasing the space of the counseling suite will do that. It will allow for de-escalation rooms, some quiet rooms for students, and also some conference space area for groups, group counseling sessions. That would then move the main office downstairs into a portion of what is currently the lower atrium near the gym, and the administration would be down there, as well as attendance and security. And that would allow us to have a secure entryway for not only the building throughout the day, but also for athletic events as well. And truly, that's our number one priority, is looking for ways to make sure that our building is as safe and secure as it can possibly be.
Should we play that dance better? And so at this point, I'd like to invite Jason up, again, president of Bernard P. Donigan, our financial consultants, to go through his team's assessment of district finances and go through our debt service and what this project will do on our debt and our future debt service payment. So thanks for being here.
Great. Good evening, everybody. As Lou said, I'm Jason Schwartz and the president of Donigan Incorporated, district's financial advisor. For many years, we've helped you through all your past recent capital projects. And as Lou mentioned, we've been kind of working and developing together, hand in hand with Lou and his team, as well as your architects and construction managers, what the scope of this next project could look like and what that means in terms of cost projections from the construction side. And then we take that and do our piece in terms of looking at, you know, what opportunities are there from retiring debt? And how, you know, do we pay for this in terms of maximizing building aid? So we put together a full report in that regard, and we kind of pulled out just some of the key information from that report for presenting to you tonight. So first thing we do anytime we look at this, and to Lou's point, talking about kind of the opportunity for reinvestment, we always like to start and look at what does our existing debt service structure look like? So this is a summary from a document that we do for the district every year at the time of budgeting in terms of helping you plan for what you need to put into your budget for your capital needs. And really, what you see here is all of your debt service for all of your existing projects. So anything that you bonded, it still has debt out there and what that looks like. In the middle of the page there, column C, you see the total debt service that we're paying. Next to that, column D is the building aid that's coming back. We get about seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent, depending on the year back in building aid. So that helps pay for a good chunk of that project cost and debt service. And then the key column that we're really focused in on is that far right-hand column, the blue column. That's what we call the local share, or the piece of those projects that we're raising from the tax levy. And that also plays into that capital exclusion into your tax cap that we want to keep, you know, nice and level if we can. And then just visually seeing how that kind of looks for any of the visual learners in the crowd. The bar all the way to the left there, where we set that line going across the page, that's what's in your current twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And so if we can kind of maintain that level, stay at or below that line, then that gets back to Lou's point where we can say there's no additional tax impact needed. We're able to complete this project kind of within the confines of our current budget and our current tax levy. So that kind of sets the stage, and that's our goal. Just a couple of quick highlights for you in terms of some items that we had kind of talked about last year when we presented, and also just giving an update. So your current credit rating is a double-A two, which is a fantastic rating. That's just two notches below triple-A, which is the highest rating you can have. So I'd say that's higher than average for a New York State school district. Most school districts are probably double-A three or A one, so a notch or two below you. And just a couple of points from that report to share with you. So it did talk about that your debt as a whole is below the double-A median. And a couple quotes that we pulled out there, it talks about how fixed costs, even with, you know, the projects you've done in the past, fixed costs are manageable, inclusive of the district's issuance plans. And specifically, they talked about, like we've already mentioned, that the seventy-seven point three percent building aid ratio you're getting back helps keep that local ship cost low. And then another key metric we look at in terms of kind of like your overall debt profile is for every school district, you have a debt limit in terms of what you can issue without needing to get a supermajority override to issue more debt. So you can see the bottom right-hand corner here, as of today, you're only using about sixteen percent of that, you know, debt issuance power. So you're not even anywhere close to your cap. Even with, you know, we'll see in a couple of slides here, this new project would propose another seventeen million of bonds. So that's only about another like six percent on top of that. So you'd still be under, you know, a quarter of your debt issuing power, even with this next project coming online. So those are just kind of a couple of benchmarks for you. Another key thing we have to look at anytime we're looking at projects, especially for a higher rate ratio district like yourselves at seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent, is what we call our maximum cost allowances. So there's limits to how much you can do within any of your buildings over a five-year period. So that's what we're looking at here, just kind of listing out by building what's available. The yellow highlighted rows are kind of the maximum you can spend. And then you see beneath that, we're backing out any work we've done in those buildings over the last five years. So we do know in our, kind of our preliminary analysis for this proposed project that we are going to have a little bit of work that will go over the aid ceiling. So you can see the red there on the incidental side at the high school and the middle school. And that's primarily because of the site work we're doing there. So even though we think of that as construction, probably in the nature of the contracts that you're awarding, the state looks at that as incidental, so it's under a slightly lower aid ceiling. But we've planned for that, and that's part of why we have that four point eight million of capital reserves we're putting in is to cover that local share of those pieces. So that's all that accounted for, and it's factored into these numbers. Okay, just a couple assumptions on the report. We won't go through all these, but just to highlight some of the key ones. So the first assumption there is building aid ratio, like we said, seventy-eight percent is your current building aid ratio. And then the bond percentage, that's what we were just talking about a minute ago with those aid ceilings. That's how much of the project we're projecting will be eligible to receive the building aid. So that's about eighty-one percent. That takes into account those red numbers we saw on the prior page. As Lou mentioned, we're, have the vote coming up next month here. And then just a few other dates we've assumed. And then really, the other thing to draw your attention to is assumption number ten, the borrowing rates. So we've assumed a five percent for a note, six percent for bonds. So that's conservative. In today's market, you're probably closer to like three, three and a half if you were issuing those borrowings today. But we know that the market can move, and we're not talking about borrowing for at least, you know, a year or two from now. So we build in some cushion there, and hopefully that turns out better than what we're projecting. So we do have some cushion built into that. Okay? So as you've seen before, the total authorization would be twenty-one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Just real quick, how that's broken down, again, on the revenue side, we have the four million, eight hundred and fifty thousand coming from reserves and the balance, the other seventeen million coming from bonds. And then that's going to be about eight point seven million in construction costs, as well as twelve point six million in incidentals. The reason that incidental number is so large, again, is because of the site work component of the project, that that's where that's accounted for. And then about five hundred and sixteen thousand for a DASNY fee, which is like our financial contingency. It's a program that we can issue the debt through if we need to, if we're in a rising rate environment, to kind of protect our local share. So just like the architect building, you see on the construction side, that's kind of your financial contingency, if you want to think of it like that. Okay? So then taking a look at that, how do we pay for that, and how does that look over the next couple of years? So in the upper left-hand corner, you know, we've got the reserves coming in, in the green highlighted box. We have the bond going out over fifteen years, and that's to align with the way that the state pays the building aid back. So we try to match that up, so we have a nice kind of smooth local share overall. In the middle of the page there, you see the debt service is about one point seven million a year, and then the building aid coming back of about one point four million. And then that far right-hand column there, the local share, so that takes a look at this project specifically. But again, like we said at the beginning of the presentation, we want to kind of see how that dovetails back in with your existing debt. So on the next slide, we take that, you see the blue column from the original page of the presentation carries forward to here. We take that maturity schedule for the proposed twenty-one million dollar project. And then when we put it all together, the green column on the right there is our new projected local share. And then you can really kind of see it come together nicely on this last page here, where we layer those green bars in with the blue ones and show that we stay right at or below that line going forward. So as Lou said, no additional tax impact for this project. So any questions? I know I went through a lot quickly, but you know, you guys have seen these project presentations before, so hopefully some of it was kind of, you know, familiar key points that you've kind of seen and heard before.
No question for me. Just a thanks for such a thorough analysis. I would say on behalf of the board, Lou's done a pretty good job of training us on sort of things to look at and how we're going about financing so many of these projects. But it's incredibly important for the community to have sort of your voice, that independent voice that sort of says, everything's going well, or our credit rating, rather, is outstanding. And I greatly appreciate you making note of that. Any other questions from the board?
It's not a question necessarily, but just a thank you that we're making good on that promise that when we put the car payment into the budget, we'd be able to continue to do the work the community wanted us to do long-term. And that this phase two is really seeing that come to fruition. So thank you for all of your help planning for that.
So? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. All right, principal reports. Colleen.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We're going to start with some celebrations that we had in January. If you take a quick peek, this was our winter concert. We had two opportunities on the half-day to come together as a school community to celebrate musical schools. It was a ton of fun. The kids had a great time, and it was the first time we had all been together in the same space all year. The only way we could pull it off is by having close to two hundred kids up on the stage and on the risers. So it was a tight space. They decided to make me a musician and play music on some pots and pans. So you'll see me up there playing on some pots and pans with Mr. Myers. And we also had a guest conductor, the dinosaur, which was Mr. Glundy. A lot of fun for the kids, a lot of giggling, a lot of laughing, a lot of laughing. And then we had some guest pups with us as well, and this was one of our therapy dogs with Mrs. Brightfall. So December started with a lot of excitement and also ended with a lot of excitement. Right here, you're going to see some pictures of some breakout boxes through Breakout EDU. If you're not familiar with them, think of them as a escape room. And the kids are given a box, they're given content and academic clues, and they have to break out of the box. They have codes, they have locks, they have clues. And for this particular slide, you're going to see a lot of pictures that overlap the content area of Witten Wisdom, which is the reading and writing program that we're doing, and the content of the Pacific Problem. Mrs. Phelan, who helped organize these breakout boxes, also applied habits of mind, as well as just the content area of Witten Wisdom, as I mentioned, and some of the STEM activities with the breakout boxes. So we have about six. We're looking at growing that, having a seventh box. But it's a nice way to get the kids engaged, working in the maker space and doing a whole bunch of different cross-curricular areas. I did switch things up a little bit, and I put our blueprint slide earlier in the presentation. I did that because with the academic excellence, the next couple of slides will support the things that we've been working on at Fraz this year. The first one aligns with what we're doing with Dr. Rio with the content area transfer goals, where we're working with our curriculum council on that. Teachers are working on collecting different pieces of student work and examples that are going to be provided for that. The next one on work with Witten Wisdom, we've had a ton of support from Mrs. Gallo, our literacy coach. There's been training on how to incorporate the new Witten Wisdom curriculum. We have some teachers who are on year two, other teachers who are on year one. I had some great conversations with our year-two teachers, and I said, what advice do you have for our year-one teachers? So when we're meeting with them, it's nice like listening to what their experiences were, and it's very comforting when teachers are like, okay, I've got it. So I want to do some more partnerships with them, just to see what they've learned regardless of their grade level. And in the next few slides, you'll see some pictures of the kiddos working with Witten Wisdom, the cross-curricular areas. The area of making math thinking visible is what we're doing with our math coach. You'll see a whole bunch of pictures in the next slides as well on vertical workspaces, where we're getting kids up out of workbooks and working on dry erase boards, working on giant Post-it papers, and how they're looking at math problems and how they're problem-solving collectively, as well as individually. In the area of habits in mind, we do our grade level meetings. We've had fourth grade and third grade so far. We had third grade yesterday, fourth grade last week. The nice thing with habits of mind, we're also celebrating the Brighton believes, or what we used to call the star qualities, which is respect, responsibility, kindness, integrity, self-control, and how those align with the habits of mind. In planning for these assemblies that we did with the kids, the teachers are part of the presentation, as well as the students. So our third graders are recorded in a video where they're teaching the kids about respect. Each grade level is teaching about kindness with different quotes that they provided. We've got some videos, we have some songs. It's really been nice to come together as a grade level to focus on those areas. And then finally, in the area of school-based equity and diversity, equity, inclusion, we've been working very closely with Natalie from the Rees Center with our school-based equity team. So we're meeting monthly. The faculty and staff that are part of that team, they've been speaking very candidly about what we're working on, and then they're implementing different activities and different lessons with our faculty. And we're hoping that those will transition into the classrooms as well. So for some pictures to support that, you'll see some kiddos at Fraz, and they were working on the Pacific Problem. They were working on oceans. They were interacting with research through their technology classes, and then they were creating interactable bulletin boards and displays. We also had some third and fifth grade students doing reading buddies, working on the research as well. So here you can see some of the Prague displays, as well as some of our kids working between the third and fifth grade together. As we shift over to making thinking, math thinking visible, this was one of our fifth grade classes, and they were using something called the three act task. When I talked to the teacher and I said, what does a three act task look like? They talked a little bit about when they present their math, the first thing that they do is they provide a picture or a video that introduces the problem at hand for math. And then the next thing she does is she's giving clues to the students to give them more context about how they're going to solve their math problems. And then they have to construct and come up with a solution for the third act, and kids are displaying what their final results are. So these pictures are taken from a fifth grade classroom. You can see the kids up on the board. You can see them holding up their work on their dry erase board. And it's just very different than the pencil and paper math that you're used to seeing in more of a traditional type classroom. But this is really engaging, and the kids obviously are having a ton of fun. If you see the smiles on their faces. In keeping everyone up and moving, our math coach was able to do some PD for our teacher assistants. If you look at this picture, this was on one of our professional development days this past December, I believe it was, or November. And what she did is she got the teachers up and gave them math problems and had to put them through a productive struggle. So what we want to do is to ensure that we're not giving kids the answers, but we're helping them work through the problems. So if you look at these pictures right here, you can see them really deep in thought, trying to solve these math problems. And then what Stefana did is she talked about when they're supporting kids in the classroom, how do you do it? Well, you're not giving the answers, but you're helping guide them on how to solve on their own. So it was fun watching them get stumped. It was fun seeing them getting up and moving and working together. And we just wanted to see how, what you do with staff, how it transitions and lends itself to the kids. Another example of the vertical spaces and getting kids up and working together on math, this is a whole bunch of fourth graders. They're also working on their math problems right here. And no one's sitting still, no one's working on their own. They're all problem-solving. They're all explaining. When you go in there, the kids become the teachers as they teach me what they're working on. And along with the vertical spaces and making math thinking visible and productive struggle, Shirley and I were part of the activity for the admin staff last week. So we gave them the same opportunity to be doing some math as a collective group. So you can see all of us going through some trickier math problems and solving together. So that was a lot of fun. To wrap up the month of December, we had our hot cocoa lodge with the help of the PTSA. We brought the staff in, we had the fireplace on, just to give the staff the opportunity to talk and to connect with one another. If you look at the pictures, we also did a nailed it activity where they had to create a edible masterpiece that kind of aligned with the winter fun. It was a mess, and it was nice to hear the teachers giggling and laugh together and also working collaboratively with people I don't typically work with. And just for some fun, you might see some pictures of people dressing like other people. We had a lot of fifth graders dressing like their teachers, and the fifth grade teachers dressing like the fifth graders. So it was an exciting way to end two thousand and twenty-three. And one other area I wanted to highlight for all of you was our fence. I don't know if you've driven by Front Row down on Metairie School, but our fence is nearly complete. It's a little hard to see the fence specifically because we still have the town snow fence there as well. But everyone is thrilled, everyone is grateful, everyone is thankful, just the safety that it's providing for kids playing, throwing the balls, throwing the footballs, running that close to the street. It's just a very welcomed, exciting thing to have here at Fraz. And finally, as we look for the month of January, our first bingo was canceled today, but everything worked out fine. We rescheduled that. Getting kids dismissed ended up being perfect. So thank you, Dr. McGowan, for letting us know early enough because we got everyone where they needed to be. So all the grade levels will have bingo for the month of January. No school, obviously, on Monday, and then we'll be doing a PTSA meeting with me later in the month on the twenty-second. And that's about it.
Fence does look great. I sort of drive by there a lot, so I sort of watch it get constructed. And to your point, the snow fence is sort of behind it from an edgeward standpoint. But I know that's been an important safety feature that people have been talking about, probably because of where Carrie Lynn and Sue and I live, we go by that spot a lot. And there are people in, on that playground, seven days a week, twelve, fifteen hours a day. So appreciate the fence being there. Ton of smiling faces in those pictures from staff and volunteers and kids. So it's great to see that. Questions from anybody else on the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's hear it from Principal Tappin and Councilor Rock.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to you. So one of the highlights of December was, if you didn't get a chance to see it, an amazing segment on Good Morning America Three about our incredible music teacher, Jill Davis. So the story that goes behind it, she called me on a Friday afternoon, which is not common for my teachers to text me and say, can I talk to you? And she said, it was in November, I think, and she said, I really need to talk to you. I said, okay, is everything all right? And she said, it's all good, actually. So she saw something on Facebook that said, do you love Sound of Music? And she just wrote her little story about how Sound of Music had impacted her life. And she said in fifteen minutes she got a call. And I said, and you believed that was someone from, actually, Good Morning America? Said, have we checked them? But it continued to progress, and she was flown there and shared her story. And if you got to see it, she was gifted with a beautiful updated recording, and then also a wonderful stay away in Vermont. So as you can see, our students, it was the half-day, so she was actually featured in the afternoon. Our kids could watch it, and a lot of our students tuned in to see the star we know she is, but she became the star for the country too. So it was wonderful for her to be featured.
I did see it, and she gave a nice Bruin shout-out.
She sure did.
And she got a video greeting from one of the original actresses who played one of the kids.
Yep, actually Brigida, who was her role model. So it was awesome. We finished two thousand and twenty-three with our traditional stay in your PJs and Read Day. I read to fifteen classes that day. I will show you a picture. So here are just some highlights, Mrs. Schaefer, myself reading, got a couple incredible faces. It's just a sweet way to end, and you can see kind of the bleary-eyed, tired, when I ran into Dr. Gasparino on her way out. I think that was after the fourteenth, and I said, one more to go, one more to go. But it was awesome. We had classes combining to try to hear guest readers. So thanks to everyone who was able to give their time and come see it. It's just a great way for us to calmly finish out a very exciting and frenetic time, sometimes at a primary school. So on our last day, we also had our traditional staff holiday breakfast, which is just a really special time. Our social committee puts it all together. Everyone brings something. Everyone's included. And we celebrate the end of the year. And this year, Max Krieger, who is our PE teacher, and Kristen Cooper went around to kind of raise morale and just had people dancing. So if you haven't done this, I'm not going to play it. It's about nine minutes. It's like pure joy of people dancing. And we shared this with the staff that day, and then we shared it with the kids that day as well. Coming back from the new year, it is easy to see as you walk around, kind of resetting of goals and talking about what resolutions mean in such creative ways. So a lot of writing, talking about what their goals are, and that's happening across the board, K first and second grade. And then something that our two math specialists have started is monthly, math monthly mystery. And what I love about this is it's right in the front lobby. It's a challenging question, and they've really worked to incorporate thinking interdependently and then taking a look at our data to see estimating is something that our kids don't have a lot of opportunities at. So every month has featured a different way of looking at something, understanding how much is in this one, this one, and then making an estimate based on much is in this one, this one, and then making an estimate based on the information they have. So they work with a friend to work interdependently, to talk about it, and then record their answer, and then we share the answer at the end of the month, and kids are drawn at random to receive a math prize for their participation. So our, again, just like Ms. Coggins shared, our academic excellence is the focus of our blueprint discussion. So I'm focusing on wit and wisdom, it is first year for us, so second year for several teachers at French Road, but first year for us at first and second grade, and not everyone's doing it, but the writing is amazing. This is from a previous board report that I shared because I couldn't wait. And then this was something as I walked around, probably one of the coolest things for me as a building administrator is walking from room to room and having similar topics, discussions, reading, but with the way the teacher approaches it. So these are actually two different rooms with the story of Akiaq, I think, and that's of the Iditarod, and they're talking about character traits and things like that, but the same conversation, but just facilitated in a little bit of a different way. And then everyone is working to fill out a topic sentence and supporting details, all in the same way, so our kids are having those assured experiences as they go, and the teachers are pushing through it, they're persevering, they're using their habits of mind to then help the kids use their habits of mind. And then we've taken on looking at the profile of a graduate and how is that going to live at Council Rock, and then really connecting it to, as you can imagine, habits of mind. What are we already doing, where does that already weave in, where do we need to build more, so that we're building the foundation at Council Rock, and they are ready then for French Road and then beyond. So it's really, we did this as faculty at a school community meeting to discuss that, and we've put all the ideas together, and we're bringing it back to them next month. So some events, we have our PTSA toy and book drive, and we're really trying to get a lot of participation in that, that started yesterday and runs through next week. So this is just a plug to parents, go through those closets, I know I'm going to do it at home, and go through some of the puzzles and games we might have outgrown, use, gently use, we don't need new, but hopefully you have all the pieces if you are donating a game. And books, a great time to be able to do that, and great cause we are donating to. And then this tomorrow, I have a meeting with the principal, and the PTSA has asked me to do a little bit of a DEI update, where are we as a district? So I've got a lot of information to update people, and then where are we at Council Rock in terms of our ESPT team and what are we doing? So I'm excited to be able to do that. No school next Monday. Next Thursday is our incoming kindergarten information night, so not the current kindergarteners, but the next class will be welcoming their families into Council Rock at Council Rock for, at 7:00 PM, to learn a little bit more about our program, registration, view a kindergarten room, and hopefully answer any questions they have. And then Friday, the 26th, is the superintendent's conference day, so no school, just want to remind people of that. Any questions?
There's always a lot happening at Council Rock. Questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Of course.
Let's hear from Tom Hall in the high school.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're doing well, ready to go?
Mm-hmm.
It's windy outside, all right?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Matt, for getting this all set up. I had the pleasure of attending EMCC, and I know our board members usually take at least one trip out to EMCC to see our students, to Eastern Monroe Career Center, and we send about 40 to 45 students every year, split between the junior 11th grade year and their 12th grade year, it's a two-year program, starting their junior year, and there's a variety of opportunities, if you're not familiar with the EMCC, it is BOSIs, but pretty much that, we don't call it BOSIs anymore, it's the Eastern Monroe Career Center, and it's quite an incredible place. If you haven't been there, we have, again, 45 students or so a year. Lou Limo and Allison Rio traveled with me, and we visited our juniors on one day and our seniors on the next. Some of the students you can see here, we're in the culinary program, the manufacturing and machining program on the right. Another student in the afternoon junior 11th grade culinary program, they're doing holiday cookies, and they were selling them, so not only making it, but learning part of the business, PC, computer repair, and network academy. Also, we have a trade electricity program, a student was bending wire to put electrical wires through, was pretty shy, but was really excited to show us what he was doing. And collision repair, another student who's working on, actually took this home and was working on it at home and then brought it back into school, but very excited to show us the work they were doing, and just, just an exciting program, and thank you again for supporting so many students to attend EMCC. Students from EMCC still graduate with a high school diploma, Regents diploma, sometimes an advanced diploma, many of them go on to college, but they're doing various, you know, exploration here, some will go on into the trades, some will go on to college, and one of the students wants to be a culinary chef in France, is taking AP level French and also culinary at EMCC, so he can be, have a variety of background and interest and be a huge success, so exciting. Our new student luncheon, we had close to 48 new students this year in Brighton, just before the holidays, we had all of our new students come for a luncheon, we gave them a gift bag. Deidre Carter is the person that meets with every single new student in the building and gets them set up with email, make sure they get their questions answered, this is something we started several years ago, but for the first time, Deidre also, as part of our parent-student engagement, she, we gave her a couple days' release to make phone calls to every single parent and made communication with every single parent, got Proprio for any interpreters that might have been needed, and went through a script that we put together, asking parents how they were doing, how their kids are doing, questions they might have, things that they, you know, now that they've been in school for two and a half, three months, maybe they have new questions they didn't know about, and she was awesome, she's in the far right corner there. But it was a great luncheon, we had a kind of a talkback, what went well with the transition, and what sort of things would they have liked us to do, done differently if we could do that and go back over again. So one of the things we're really going to implement and try to get, building signs for room numbers, and I know for open house it will help so many people, it's been a project that seems to be on my constant to-do list, but then everything always rides over. We're really, really going to try to make that happen. Science Olympiad is going strong, look at how many students are in Science Olympiad. Model UN is still the biggest group, but they took second place in Syracuse, did a phenomenal job, only lost to the first, the team that won states last year. We have an American Red Cross Club, the leadership class used to do all of our blood drives under the American Red Cross Club, has taken over our blood drives, we just did one in December, we're going to do one again in February, on February 10th, and we encourage you, if you can donate and give blood, please do. Our fashion club and climate club joined forces, forces just before the holiday to up, what do they call it, their up?
Cycle.
Upcycling, thank you. Upcycling clothing, so taking old clothing and either combining it with other old clothing and making a new outfit, or just doing something different to an item or bringing it in and selling it to someone else who will find it as a brand-new item. The students put it together pretty much, it was in our makerspace, there are now sewing machines, and there are several of the students who are doing this after school as part of fashion club, and the climate club encouraged this activity as a way to, you know, help the environment.
Tom, can I just point out, can you back up three sides, one more? That's Ruby Brotherton, who is like a legit fashion designer.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
One of our students.
That's awesome.
Yeah, fantastic.
So Ruby actually is planning right now with two of our other clubs, I won't say who they are yet because we're making sure this is going to happen, we're actually going to have a fashion show of some sort in the spring, and Ruby's going to have that up with our fashion club. So more to come on that, so thank you.
You've been leading them, right?
Leading, yes, I'm all about fashion. I think you probably should be. Dr. McGowan. But yes, I might even be up there modeling some clothes like we've done before, so we're really excited about that. This makerspace, that'll be a presentation, hopefully maybe in March for me to provide to you. There's a lot under works under Dr. Glazer's leadership, and Daisy Hutchinson, and Stacy Kugel, and help with Dr. Rio. It's going to be a great space for multiple different things, it's a multipurpose room kind of. There's the set of crew that put this all together, did a great job. Lot of community service before break, our boys lacrosse team, thanks to Coach Metz, wrapped gifts for Primetime 585, they collected donations, and our boys lacrosse team wrapped all of them, got them together, and then Primetime delivered them to students before the holidays. Our student council had a theme week, you could wear this or that, and it was quite in the same time, we haven't really done that before, so it was just before the holidays. CSU, Christian Student Union, on the very last day of school, there was a whole room full of kids making gingerbread houses, and they came in to have me judge the final three entries, and here was our winner. It was a big tower of gingerbread and a snowman that's hung on the side of the gingerbread, but they had such a great time, a lot of fun. Our academic excellence, I will just say that this has morphed since the summertime when we shared these goals for the blueprint. We are in the process of creating a, basically a general guide, a guidebook that we're going to give especially to our new faculty that come to us on best practices, things that we've learned since 2015 on grading and assessment, and that's in the works right now, but I'm really excited especially for those new teachers, new teachers, but all of our faculty will get it, and we hopefully will have a good consensus from our leadership team on what that booklet will contain in the practices, and model grade books. Lots of things happening, college career night to high school, if you have a student that might be interested in going onto any college, any career, military, two, four-year schools, that will be a phenomenal night, it's one of the best in the entire county, if not in the state. I applaud our counselors putting that together, we're doing program planning at the PTSA meeting, lots of concerts. Yeah, so, any questions?
Questions or comments for Tom? Ton of activity going on in the high school as always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we'll hear from Danielle in the middle school. As you are getting set up, Danielle, I wanted to say thanks on behalf of the board for taking us around, we had the opportunity to do a tour of the school, look at a number of the projects that have been completed, as well as some upcoming projects, and sort of hear directly from you some of your hopes and dreams for how we can improve the learning spaces for the kids. You obviously have had for the tour and have great support from the buildings team as well, so thank you for taking the time to do that with us tonight.
Great, thanks for being here. Like everyone else shared, December was an exciting month for us, it was a big concert season. We started off December with our chorus concert, and we had all three grade levels performing, so the sixth grade chorus performed, and then the seventh and eighth grade combined performed, and then our, sorry, I have no words.
Show choir?
Thank you, thank you. The show choir also performed that evening, and it was the first time that our students have been able to perform at the awesome high school auditorium, so it was really nice to take advantage of that very professional feeling space. The students had a great time, and Ms. Cuturelli had them, and Mrs. Padilla had them all in tip-top shape, they did a great job that night. Also equally amazing was the orchestral concert that took place the following week. We actually had all three orchestras on stage at the same exact time, so we started with sixth grade, they performed, and then those students kind of moved back, and then the seventh grade performed on stage, and by the time the eighth graders performed, all three orchestras were on stage and they performed a piece together, which was really, really neat. I don't even pretend to understand the logistics that were involved with organizing the seats alone for that, but it was really amazing, and for both the orchestra and the chorus concert, it was really nice because the students who weren't performing were able to watch their peers. So the seventh and eighth graders watched the sixth graders perform and vice versa, and that's not something that we've had done at least in my two to three years here, so that was really nice for them to support each other. And then we finished up with the band, same thing, all three bands performed on one night. Started off with sixth grade, they knocked it out of the park, and then seventh grade came in about half an hour, 15 minutes after they finished, and then eighth grade after that. We also had two students, Kai Faruda and Gabby Cappy, performing a flute duet in between each of the performances, so they kept all the adults entertained as they were transitioning. We, it's nice to note that Justin Perez, who is the band teacher here, seventh grade band teacher, and also Matthew Glendee, who's the sixth grade orchestra teacher, had their first performances, so they got their jitters out and did a great job as well. In terms of academic excellence, we're moving to sixth grade, Maria Katsatos's class worked with Stacy Kugel, they virtually toured Egypt, you can see them holding up the iPads that they were able to get from BOSIs and go through a virtual tour, but they also had a Zoom session with an Egyptologist from the Modern Museum of Art in New York City, and that was really neat for the students to experience that. We had our eighth grade activity night, which was a pajama night, and lots of fun was had by all for that. We continued our work with, in the library, you probably saw some signs when you came in, this was our third iteration of it, and Mr. Elkins read with the students that you see here, the book Spare Parts, and then during win one day, he met with all of them and Mrs. Lambert as well, and he taught the students how to create a hydraulic arm that they could take home. So it was really neat, and then this month, Mrs. Kerr is working on another text that she'll be reading with students next week, or next week, actually, she'll be meeting with them. So each week, each month, we're celebrating different texts with different teachers, and it's really gone super well so far, so I'm excited to see that continue. December brought our holiday festivities. Mrs. Walter in German VII had the students create their gingerbread houses for competition, so that was a big deal, the one on the bottom left there was the winner. We also had our flash mob that Dr. McGowan starred in, and Dr. Rio starred in, next year maybe we'll get Lou to be a part of it so he can show us his dance moves. We had well over 80 people involved in it this year, it really was amazing. The worst part of it was that there were so many students in the atrium waiting for us that we actually didn't have the room that we needed, so it was, it was really great, really fun. We also did some activities, we celebrated for the last two weeks, we did a whole theme around, I'm sorry, I have no thoughts tonight, I'm, I'm not doing well. What am I trying to think of? Believe, coach.
Oh, Ted Lasso.
Ted Lasso, thanks. This is a game, it's fun.
Well done, Esther.
Nice. That was a lot of pressure.
Little bit of neck pain that I'm suffering from, and it's really got me kicked off today, I apologize. But we did a whole Ted Lasso theme with the staff for the last two weeks, and we celebrated something different. Each time, people brought in their favorite Ted Lasso quotes, we, we all shared gold, you know, the goldfish crackers, so that you have the memory of a goldfish, we just did things like that to keep it fun, and then our instrumental teachers played lots of holiday songs as students were leaving the day before break. In terms of our priority areas of academic excellence, Jen Kramer and Justine Parks finished their habits of mind training, they did an institute which was very intense, and not only are they applying what they learned into their classes, but they're acting as turnkey trainers for their peers as well. We're continuing to find ways to support planning time for teachers so that they can create units and lessons that build that student agency and work around the transfer goals that they've been developing, and also that they're working towards the attributes developed in the profile of a graduate. This has been great this year with the addition of the instructional leaders, so having like Becky Wiggins and some of the other leaders be able to facilitate this work and advocate for time for teachers to collaborate has been really great. Our school-based equity team and PAC and our CCLT continue to review our culture data and our climate data, and each time we meet, we're finding different ways to improve the sense of belonging in our building. The big focus this year for all of those groups really has been around the unstructured spaces in our building, so hallways, breakfast in the morning, lunch, dismissal, and finding different little tweaks that we can do to make it better, like a simple example is, at the end of the day, we're staggering dismissal, so sixth graders get out two minutes earlier than seventh graders, than eighth graders, it gives them that time and space to be in the hall without all the different people. So we're working on those little tweaks that will help, and we continue to work with folks from Rees Center and also BOSIs to help us support our culturally responsive professional development. I've talked a ton about our inclusive language protocol training that we've done with staff, and our TCMS Strong students are ready to go. In February, they're going to start launching those lessons with their peers, they've been training since last June to do this, to be able to have those really deep and difficult conversations with their own peers, so we're really excited for that. And then Rees Center is coming, we're super excited for them to be here in person in April. They did do a training on our last conference day to support- They did do a training on our last conference day to support the safe, supportive, and affirming school environment for transgender and gender expansive students. And then we've also had Dr. Heatley from URMC in to do training with our staff on trauma-informed teaching. And all of that's going to kind of come together with the work that ReCenter is going to do when they're here in April. So we're going to look at specific case studies of students without names attached and then take that back to the trauma-informed lens. And like, okay, so what does this look like then in practice? Lots going on this month. Again, people have mentioned we don't have school on Monday. We do have PTSA meeting with the principal on the seventeenth. And we have folks from LineWise coming to support, or Custodial is what it's called. It's the parent portion of our filtering system where parents can set up monitoring on their, on their students' devices and get a window into what they're doing. So we'll record that and share that with all folks. Solfest is coming up as well, which is a big deal. We'll have hundreds of students in our building. And then our six-go-seven, or sorry, our five-go-six parent orientation is on the twenty-third here, followed by our eight-oh-nine at the high school. Marking period is coming to an end very quickly. And then trip season starts. So the French students are going to Quebec. That's my cue.
Just, I'll make a quick comment, Danielle. Really appreciate, and we got to see this before and it's in some of the documentation, the focus you and the team have on being really thoughtful about mental health services for kids in these age range. Just like the planning, like all of the plans that are coming. And it, it just shows the real thoughtfulness that you and your leadership team have about how do we make sure these kids are getting the best out of their experience here? So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank you. Everybody's reports were excellent. You're also battling through neck and back pain. And so that's not easy and you gave us a tour earlier. And Tom, trying to take you out in advance of the staffing meetings tomorrow morning is just, I think, dirty pool.
I know, I know. I'm glad you see that, as long as it's, it's clear and transparent. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good, yeah.
Excellent set of reports, just very exciting. A couple of approvals here ahead of us on the agenda. First up is the approval of the 2023-2024 non-resident tuition plan. As we all know, we generally don't have kids not living here, coming here. But there could be a situation where someone moves before the end of a year and there's an accommodation following a state formula that, that sets a cost for us. So this is just sort of a formality based on our, our numbers off the state formula. Questions with regards to the non-resident tuition plan? Motion to approve.
So moved?
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to clarify once for the, anybody that's, the three people watching the live feed or anybody that watches it later, we don't have a tuition program where people can tuition in. And there's confusion sometimes around that because we did many years ago. This is, again, as Larry said, well, when people move and the state requires us to set a rate that's given to us in a formula from them. But that's a formal action you take in case we need to use it, but we don't have an open enrollment program.
And it's only moving within the same school year? Like to complete their school year?
Or when a senior has been with us through the end of their junior year, they are allowed to stay without paying tuition. That's by board policy. But the current board policy does not allow for any tuition into the district program.
Those are all good clarifications, thank you. Next up, we have approval of a recommendation for modification of a title. And I'll let Dr. McGowan talk to this one.
Well, this is very exciting. So we'll see if we can walk through this without this person clearing the room or crawling under the table. I would like to congratulate, and it's news to some of the people sitting over there. Lou Alimo, our current Assistant Superintendent for Administration, who after this motion will be referred to simply as our Deputy Superintendent. Lou began his career as an accountant at KPMG doing public accounting before he joined the Greece Central School District. And he quickly ascended through several positions. He was Deputy Treasurer, Director of Finance, School Business Administrator, and then finally their Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Support Services. After being enormously successful in that challenging position in Greece, he was very much recruited to be a part of this school community. In fact, he was pointed out by many as the person that we had to have, including the long-serving venerable leader here in the district, Gary Lani, who was very excited for Lou to pursue this position. And it was because of his sterling reputation as, as a leader, as an expert in school finance, but more importantly, as a human being, that we were hopeful he'd become a part of this team. Interesting, when he applied for this job, yes, your cover letters do get read again. I'm totally not honoring your humility right now, Lou, but this is important to point out to people. He did write to the district that his approach to public service was to make strategic, well-researched and collaborative recommendations. That's exactly what he's done. So in 2011, he wrote that to us, that would benefit all of our students and be responsible to the stakeholders of the district. He discussed his commitment to integrity, trust, transparency, building relationships, especially during challenging financial times. And think about the challenging financial times he has seen over his last thirteen years here. So from that initial letter through now, and every moment in between, Lou, you've done exactly that. The change in title is a reflection of the role that you truly play in the organization to everyone and to our team, to me personally, and is one that your colleagues are incredibly excited about. It's simply a change in name only, but a name that better reflects a status earned over time, simply because of the work you've done and the impact that you've had. We make it to clarify how much you mean to all of us, but really to the work, to our children, to this community. And we promise to honor humility, your humility by not expanding further. Too late. Further than this, but simply by saying thank you, thank you, and thank you, and congratulations. We, our team, our children, and this community are better off because of the ways that you have supported all of us. So congratulations.
It might be bad form to approve, or clap before we approve, but that's okay.
He's having second thoughts anyways now at this point.
So I put, we'll put the motion for approval forward for the recommendation of the modification of the title.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Eleanor. Eleanor? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. I will, Lou, just say briefly on behalf of the board, some of us have been trained by you in our board training sessions when we were onboarded when we first started. So that's a function you provide, not just for Brighton, but for Monroe County. And that's an acknowledgement of your knowledge and your ability to talk to people and answer their questions. So congratulations from all of us as well. It is well-deserved and we all enjoy working with you. Next up is the consent agenda. We have a number of fundraising activities which, which provide great eating opportunities. Those are my best, favorite kind. Also, a field trip approval for a trip that was taken. We know this happens once in a great while, based on the timing of our meetings for trips, that was taken in, in December by the girls' basketball team. Looks like a fun trip. And then upcoming trips, the Outdoor Club has the Adirondack Peak Experience and the Spring Leadership Conference in Syracuse. Finally, as is our tradition, I will read off the gifts we have received. First, a gift to Brighton High School Library from the, from Historic Brighton of archival salon photographs from the town's history, featuring architectural landmarks, street scenes, and local businesses. A gift to Brighton High School of the embroidery sewing machine. A gift to Brighton Central School District in the amount of $25,000. Do you want to talk about this one for just a minute? This is pretty cool. It's a family of a graduate who was very successful and appreciated very much his time at Brighton and the impact it had on him.
It's that Kramer Family Foundation is the official tag, Lou, yes. And a graduate named after Mr., the foundation named after Mr. Kramer graduate for the school and his children have very generously reached out to the district. They also supported the redesign, redevelopment of our tennis court facility previously. And this is supporting that Makerspace as well. So we're very appreciative of the generous donation and the Kramer Family Foundation reaching out to us.
Just really cool. And finally, a gift to the Brighton Central School District from the IDEA Board for seventeen T1 Inspire CX calculators. The IDEA Board being the town board. And I, I don't know the exact acronym for IDEA.
The diversity.
Inclusion, diversity, equity, and accountability, I believe.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So a great list of gifts on top of a great list of trips, both taken and upcoming, on top of a great list of ways to eat, to support a number of activities in the school district. Questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Moved by Sue?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we close, thank you again to Danielle and the buildings team for our tour of the building. And I believe Dr. McGowan has a couple of comments to close.
Oh, regarding, oh, so yes. I had to think through that as you were saying that. I was thinking about that differently. Yeah, really excited. One, just reminding people, February seventh is our Kepler Project vote. We have a meeting on the thirty-first, 7:00 PM, Community Forum, discussion of the vote. Any information that people would like? A lot of information on the website as well. Important to keep pointing out that there is not a tax impact for this particular vote because of the debt service that currently is in the budget, our ability to pay the local share. Lou talked a lot about that tonight and about the financing as well for that. So we're really excited about those improvements and the ability to do that without impacting the tax levy going into next year.
And our independent financial people sort of talked through that as well from Burnetown.
Yes, exactly. Also, a question that's come up before is timing of the vote, because we typically do votes in May. Well, the annual budget vote is in May by statute, by law, in every school district. But other votes, other referendum can happen at any time during the year. And this vote happening in February is absolutely to take advantage of timing so that once the vote happens, the pre-referendum work can happen to design the project fully and submit that to the state for approval, all which is required of us by law. And so if we do it in February, the timing is such that we will take better advantage of bid season and construction season by voting now instead of waiting another three months or so until the budget vote in May, when there's also other votes happening in other places where we would be competing for the ability to do that construction perhaps. So the timing is really important for us to do that. And I'm very much looking forward to our budget survey, which will be coming out at the end of the month. Also, we will hear next week, on the sixteenth, the governor is by law required to put out her budget proposal, which is the start really of the budget process for the state of New York. The State of the State address today outlines some of the policy initiatives that she plans to propose as well. And finally, I will not get the next board meeting, as the board is aware, but certainly letting the community aware. I'm traveling on behalf of the Association of School Administrators with forty other volunteers from across the country on the Life Touch Memory Mission to Guatemala to assist in building a school with indigenous people in rural Guatemala. An organization called Hug It Forward that's been working on building classrooms for kids that do not have classroom space. So really excited about that and thinking about ways to tie that into both Brighton believes, but some of our courses, particularly at the middle school, with some social studies interaction around that. So excited to come back and tell you all about it and tell you about the experience there.
Have some great pictures, get up at the podium and do a presentation like principals do. That sounds great.
I'm looking forward to it. Be careful what you wish for.
Thank you very much. Finally, gratitude as always. And we say this each time we travel. We show up, tables are set up, everything is laid out, the technology is working, and everything just goes smoothly. Now, we don't know what you all have to do to get it to go smoothly, but we just know we come in and sit here and everything's working. So to Annalise, Mike, and Bill, our gratitude, not just for tonight, but for the other trips as we sort of moved around the district and the school. Thank you all so much for your hard work in getting everything set up and having it work as flawlessly as it does. So our gratitude to all of you, thank you very much. We can clap, that's all right. With that, any other comments or questions from the board? Then I offer a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.